Good morning. If everyone could please take their seats and silence their phones and other devices, welcome to this joint public hearing with the House Consumer Affairs Committee and the Senate Communications and Technology Committee. This hearing is on rural broadband. It's not on any other technologies, and it does not deal with any issues of safety, which are regulated by the FCC. We will have testimony from three groups of individuals from different areas of expertise, and questions will be asked by members only. And if we could begin with bringing up Darren Yoker from Pennsylvania Farm Bureau, Jeremy Jurek from Michael Baker International, and Lance Graeble from Beaver County Office of Planning and Development to the front table. I'm Chairman Jim Marshall from Beaver and Butler Counties, and we will have members introduce themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Rob Mattsy, the Democrat House Consumer Affairs Chairman, also from Beaver County and a small portion of Allegheny County.
First time here, so excuse me. Senator John Kane, Ninth Senatorial District, encompasses parts of Delaware County and Chester County.
Good morning, everyone. State Senator Kristin Phillips Hill, York County, and I want to thank Chairman Marshall and Chairman Mattsy for extending the invitation for the Senate Communications and Technology Committee to join you for this important hearing this morning on the issue of rural broadband. As so many of you in this room know, it has been a top priority for me and for our committee. And although we have held a series of hearings on the topic and have worked on some significant pieces of legislation, there is still so much work to be done to improve access to broadband, especially in the most rural areas of our Commonwealth. So I am looking forward to hearing from our testifiers today and to also continue this important conversation. And again, thank you to Chairman Marshall and Chairman Mattsy.
My name is Representative Eric Nelson, 57th District, Westmoreland County.
Todd Stevens, 151st District, in Montgomery County.
Representative Tom Haffey, 106th District, Dolphin County.
Brett Miller, 41st District, Lancaster County.
Good morning. State Representative Chris Quinn, 168th District, Delaware County.
Carl Metzger, Somerset, Bedford County.
Tommy Sankey, Clearfield, Cambria.
Representative Austin Davis, Allegheny County.
Senator Nikhil Sevall, Philadelphia County.
Representative Donna Bullock, Philadelphia County.
We're also being joined virtually by Representative Pam Snyder from Green County. Pam will be joining, and we'll be prepared to ask questions as well. She's been our champion on the House Democrat side for rural broadband, and we appreciate that she was able to join us virtually. Thank you.
The committee has written testimony from the testifiers that are here in person and from other groups. I would ask that those with us today, instead of reading verbatim your written testimony, if you could highlight some issues. And we will begin with Darren Yoker from the Pennsylvania Farm Bureau.
Good morning, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to present just a few thoughts on the issue of rural broadband. And I also want to thank you for the spirit of bipartisanship that this issue has had over the years. We greatly appreciate it. So this issue has been at the forefront of our legislative agenda long since before the pandemic started, and the state has taken important steps to address the need for better deployment. But clearly, there is much more that needs to be done, and we are faced with an absolute critical moment of time. Right now, we fully understand the struggles created by inadequate broadband service and a source of funding to address this problem. So our message to lawmakers is very simple: Please do not let this opportunity pass us by. Our goals for rural broadband are straightforward and can be summed up in three key points. Number one, develop a plan. Number two, find the appropriate agency to award grant funding. And three, dedicate current American Rescue Plan dollars to broadband regardless of what we might receive in new federal infrastructure spending. Our role in the broadband conversation is to be an advocate for last-mile users. We are not a service provider. We don't have engineers and expertise on staff, but we are in an excellent position to convey the problems that the lack of service creates and the growth that is being stifled by the lack of adequate service. So thankfully, we are at a moment in time where we can address this digital divide. First, we need to create a plan that identifies the areas of greatest need and creates a roadmap to clear out the legislative and regulatory hurdles that stand in the way. Thankfully, Penn State has already developed mapping software that provides a picture of current service, existing infrastructure, and current speeds, and that data is an excellent starting point for determining the communities that should be prioritized for service. We need to be technology-neutral in our deployment and provider-neutral in who provides that service. Whether it's startup companies, established providers, cooperatives, or municipalities, we must embrace an all-of-the-above solution, and a robust broadband plan should explore that issue in depth. With an established plan, Pennsylvania then must equip an agency to implement an award funding, and we absolutely support the creation of a broadband authority to allocate grant dollars to providers who want to expand that last-mile service. And lastly, we support proposals that are currently before this House Committee that call for either using $100 million or $500 million of American Rescue Plan dollars on broadband, and we need this funding along with the dollars that we are going to receive from the recently enacted infrastructure plan. The need is simply that great out there, and all of those dollars could go to establishing better service in rural communities. So again, we're at a unique point in time when it comes to broadband and investing in our rural communities. We understand the scope of the problem, the inadequacies that exist out there, and finally have some resources to address the problem. And we encourage the General Assembly to move swiftly on these three critical areas: planning, deployment, and funding. Time is of the essence, and every window in time eventually closes, and we do not want to see this moment pass us by without our state making substantial progress on the issue of rural broadband, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. We'll go right into Jeremy Jurek from Michael Baker.
Thank you, Chairman. Lance Graeble and I would like to give a dual testimony, if that's okay. I'll hand it over to you, Lance.
First of all, thank you to the House Consumer Affairs Committee, the representatives, state officials, everybody here. Obviously, we know this is an important matter. We appreciate being here.
Lance, need you up closer to the microphone, please.
I need you closer. I'm sorry.
Right on it.
Not used to that. My name is Lance Graeble. I'm here with Jeremy Jurek. We're going to submit a combined testimony to talk about the importance of the broadband access for all specifically related to our rural areas. I'm the Director of the Office of Planning Redevelopment for Beaver County.
Yeah, my name is Jeremy Jurek. I'm with Michael Baker International. We specialize in architecture engineering, broadband planning, and have 900 employees in Pennsylvania.
So we started a study, a process, about two and a half, three years ago. It started as looking at infrastructure in general: gas, water, sewer, telecommunications, everything. And quickly, broadband came to the forefront as what was going to be a top priority for us. It happened, we started doing this prior to the pandemic and prior to COVID, and when that came about, it made it even more of a priority. Fortunately for us, we had set it as a priority ahead of that time and started doing some work and started doing some needs assessment on exactly what needed to be done and how we needed to go about it. We'd like to go over to some of those results. There's a ton of information. We tried to break it down to the results that we think it could best apply to you guys here this morning and make sure, hopefully, we can help with any additional planning efforts that you all might be making. Our goal was to make sure we knew what we needed and where we needed it and where we needed it the most as related to rural broadband, and to make sure that any of the funding that we got, that we received, we wanted to make sure that we spent that as responsible as possible, to make sure we weren't overbuilding, that we weren't putting money into areas that didn't need it, and that we used all that funding the proper way. So we go over here to Jeremy to kind of walk through some of that process.
All right, thank you, Lance. So the first thing we did is we took a look at the FCC Form 477 mapping, just to get a general idea of the landscape of broadband in Beaver County. And with the inherent issues in that data, you know, it's mapped at the census block level. So if there's one location served in that census block, the entire census block is considered served. As Lance and I reviewed this, we decided, as Mr. Yoker has said, to come up with a data collection plan to truly identify the actual number of locations that need broadband access in Beaver County. So as Lance mentioned, this is extremely important because we want to make sure we use funding mechanisms to implement broadband solutions where it's most needed. With ARPA funding coming out, this kind of sets the stage for Beaver County. And with ARPA funding, similar to what Mr. Yoker said, we truly want to spend as much money possible on broadband right now. So the data collection methodology that we used, this started in May of 2021, and the first thing we did was we took a hands-on approach. We looked at the 477 mapping in relation to GIS and other data sets to come up with potential areas: Where might broadband be lacking? We took these potential gap areas, and we validated via a boots-on-the-ground approach. We sent field staff out with door hangers in hand and placed door hangers on over 2,000 locations that we believe to be lacking broadband access. While we were there, we did utility pole inventories to understand the actual physical broadband architecture on site. We knocked on doors and spoke to residents to get their feedback, stakeholder engagement, where we met them where they were. And then we also, on that door hanger, provided them with a URL to go to a website to submit additional feedback, run speed tests, and perform a broadband survey to give us feedback. While that was occurring, we candidly spoke with over a dozen Internet service providers in Beaver County. The telecom landscape in Beaver County is very complex. There's a lot of providers. Actually, a lot of them are in this room now. And during this process, we identified more issues, entered into some non-disclosure agreements with some of the entities to get more refined mapping. And during that time, we also were calling and receiving feedback from residents, you know, as the study progressed through the summer. So some of that feedback Lance is going to walk through, and then also some of the high-level statistics that we've just recently found.
Yeah, through this process, this great process that Michael Baker walked through, they did a wonderful job going through this and engaging residents and having a really concrete plan of what we needed to do so we could accomplish what we needed to. We were able to figure out that there were 2,359 unserved locations in Beaver County. Had we just utilized the Form 477 data, we would have been looking at 1,042. So there was a much larger number of unserved locations than what we had originally thought based off of the 477 data, and it kind of validated our concerns and our desire to take that data and refine it as much as we could. If it's okay, I'd just like to walk through a few of the quotes that we've got from some of our residents regarding the study that was being conducted. The first one was a resident from Potter Township said, "We almost moved out of state due to poor Internet and other job opportunity. Internet access in our area is terrible, and I have to leave home daily to access better Internet." Another resident, or a future resident, business owner in Chippewa Township said, "I'm thrilled to be moving back to Beaver County where I grew up. However, it's been a shock to find out how difficult it is to secure high-speed Internet service that will serve our family and my business needs." Another resident from South Beaver Township, "We really dislike only having satellite as our only option. It's slow, doesn't work well, and is expensive for the level of service provided." Independence Township resident, "Two different Internet service providers quoted us $20,000 to extend their service to our area. We have no fixed broadband. We use our smartphones and mobile devices." And lastly, a resident from Green Township, "We currently have to stagger our Internet usage as only one or two family members can be on the Internet at a time. This makes working from home and schoolwork very difficult."
Some general statistics from the study as well. Lance already mentioned one of them. 2,359 actual locations have been identified, which is 125% more than identified through existing mapping. Through the broadband public survey, the top two barriers to broadband access for residents in Beaver County, 49% said, "I cannot get faster service." 20% said, "I cannot afford faster service." We asked residents about, "How often did you work from home before COVID and after COVID?" Pre-pandemic, only 16% of residents worked or learned from home 40 hours per week. That has more than doubled to be 35% now. Of 560 fixed broadband speed tests taken, 89% of these being in rural areas, 46% of those speed tests had download speeds that fell below the threshold of 25 megabits per second, the FCC definition of broadband, and 42% of the upload speeds fell below 3 megabits per second. We do understand that folks may subscribe to a lesser tier, but this also helps us understand adoption of higher speed in these areas. Through our boots-on-the-ground approach, we identified 124 structures that are razed or no longer exist that were identified as being unserved, which could save the county potentially upwards of $1 million. And last, we've performed over 5,500 mobile broadband speed tests at every location we visited, for AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon, the top three carriers in Beaver County. 58% of these speed tests fell below the FCC definition of broadband. 85% of these speed tests were performed in rural areas. So Lance, I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, what we feel like we've done is provide ourselves an exact roadmap of where we need to go, what we need to do, how we need to deploy. We actually believe this is potentially a blueprint for the Commonwealth to be able to use going forward to resolve the digital divide issue that seems to be prevalent right now in the Commonwealth. In addition to this, we do believe that there's potentially some inherent challenges that are going to come from it. One of those is digital literacy. We realize that some of these areas, they have very little or no mobile, no broadband. And we know even in some of our more urban areas, there's some digital literacy issues that's going to continue and potentially expand as we expand coverage. Affordability is another one of those. Under the same guidelines, it's going to expand as we expand coverage. We're going to need to make sure that we continue to address that. I'm sorry, there's a potential, as we change the definition of broadband and what those served speeds are, it's actually potentially going to create more unserved in our area. So we're kind of working on making sure we have an idea of what that roadmap is going to be as well, so we know what those pockets potentially are going to be. So we have to be careful with that. In addition to that, mobile connectivity is another area that it's going to hit, and it can be able to continue to hit. So we're able to use some of the funding that we have now to do some studies and have some understanding. As Jeremy mentioned, we were able to do 5,600 tests in our area. We need to do many, many more. There is some potential funding to do some of that work, but deployment and fixing that issue, the funding isn't as prevalent as what it is right now for some of the rural fixed broadband. So we need to make sure that we continue to work on that funding.
Sure, and related to ARPA funding, you know, as we read the interim final rule, it appears to become difficult to roll out deployment for mobile wireless connectivity in areas. And also, another gigantic feedback we received in Beaver County is only having access to one Internet service provider. I personally fall into that category as well. Per the ARPA interim final rule, it becomes difficult to address that comprehensively as well. So we're hopeful that, you know, moving forward with future funding, that these issues can be addressed as well.
And just one last thing on the funding portion, you know, we would ask that consideration be made. We have, there are some funding capabilities out there, like the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. That funding goes to the providers, and if that money would be able to go to entities like the county that have gone through this process and have a really good roadmap of what they need to do and where we need to spend that, it opens up those lines of communication. It makes it a little easier for us to be able to negotiate and do what we need to do for the actual deployment. So that would be one of the things that we would ask everyone to consider as we move forward. And I think that about wraps it up for what we have. I really appreciate the time. This can't be more important to us in Beaver County, and I really, and I mean this, I can't thank you all enough for making this such an important issue for all of you, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, gentlemen. We will get to that briefly. I'd like to note that there will be members of the Senate and House coming and going from to and from different meetings, and that we've been joined by Representatives Mullins, McKenzie, Parker, Pickett, Malagieri, Deloger, Markozic, and Schwer. Any others, Mr. Chairman? And our first question will be from Senator Phillips Hill.
Thank you, Chairman Mattsy. Gentlemen, thank you for being here today. If I could, to the fine folks from Beaver County, I've been saying for years that in order to effectively bring high-speed broadband Internet to the most rural areas of the state that we need better and more up-to-date mapping, I sit on the FCC's Intergovernmental Advisory Committee, and I will tell you that at our last meeting, I questioned Chairwoman Rosenwarschel, the commissioners, as to when that new and improved mapping will be available. They are, I've been told, currently reworking it and hope to have it to assume but would not commit to a date. We also know and have heard testimony that Penn State is working on their mapping as well. So I think it's really encouraging to hear that Beaver County began to do their own mapping. Who knows better than the people right there on the ground, right? So have any other counties approached you to start doing something similar? Have you assisted any other municipal entities on this mapping issue?
Well, first of all, thank you for your interest in working with FCC to update that mapping. It's hugely important, and I really appreciate that. We've had a few, we had Washington County reached out to us. We responded back but have yet to be able to communicate with them. And through our efforts, I brought in some members of SPC to see what it was that we were doing and see how far along in the process that we were. And they have since engaged Michael Baker to do a very similar project to what we're doing, to do it for the 10-county region that SPC covers. So there's some great work that's being done there. And having, we just completed our study here in October, the end of September, and the amount of data and what we know, I'm sure that the 10-county region is, they're going to really know what they have if they follow the same guidelines as what we did. It's remarkable.
Fantastic. Can you quantify the cost of what your effort to improve your mapping entailed?
You know what? I'd have to get back to you and answer that correctly because there was a couple of different things that we went through, and I wouldn't want to give you a number that wasn't completely accurate right now, but I'd be happy to get back to you with that.
I would appreciate that very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one question for the Farm Bureau. Mr. Yoker, you mentioned in your testimony the need for some legislative mechanism to assist in the handling of the federal infrastructure money. Can you further explain how you envision that entity being established or arranged to best maximize the use of those federal dollars?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, we hearken back to the Joint State Government Task Force recommendation on creating a broadband authority, so one that has, you know, bicameral, bipartisan support, but obviously one that takes in expertise from this industry that can say, you know, with, you know, objectivity, here is where we best can deploy, and here is where we are going to get the biggest bang for our buck. You know, obviously, I think if we look at the existing state government agencies, no matter what, there would need to be some tweaking because we just have not dedicated this sort of substantial resources yet towards broadband. And now that we have, you know, substantial federal dollars coming in, I think it's in everybody's best interest that we have some sort of entity in place that can allocate that properly. So, you know, we would support the creation of an authority that would, you know, be able to allocate those resources properly.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Question from Chairman Mattsy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Darren, you stated that neighboring states have well-defined and articulated broadband plans, and Pennsylvania needs one to create a roadmap for deployment. Talk about what you've identified from some of our neighboring states. I know what West Virginia has done far exceeds what we have done from the perspective of really identifying where there are pitfalls throughout the state, and they're like two years ahead of us, quite frankly. Do you support legislation or create grant programs that doesn't have a robust plan in place for deployment? I mean, I think we need to ensure that we really do it right, and I think, you know, having a stakeholder and advocate from the Farm Bureau who really advocates for the rural part of our Commonwealth is crucial.
I mean, I will say the last thing that we would want to see is this service go to areas, or, you know, new service go to areas that are currently served. We just have far too many underserved areas in this Commonwealth that we need to do this according to in a plan and with an entity that is going to be able to follow that plan and execute it. You know, easily can Google West Virginia's broadband plan, Ohio's broadband plan, and look at the areas that they have identified. And I mean, you get even down into, you know, real minute detail of micro trenching along, you know, public roadways, and if that's an adequate way to, you know, to lay fiber cable. I mean, that's something that, you know, I can't say whether or not PennDOT allows that kind of thing, but that's the type of, you know, real detail that we need so we can do deployment intelligently. But at the end of the day, it is a question of, we want to make sure that the underserved areas are served first with this new investment. Otherwise, overbuild does nobody any good, and we are back to the same problem that we were, you know, earlier in this century.
Thank you. And real quick, Jeremy or Lance, thank you for making the drive that Jim and I have to make when we come to Harrisburg. Grateful for your presence and obviously have had a handle on what you've been doing. But talk about mapping again, though. I mean, I think let's get back to that. I mean, because I've harped on mapping for the last couple of years with stakeholders as well as the administration and my colleagues about just how important that is. And I know, you know, Senator Phillips Hill mentioned, you know, her role with the FCC now and her position, which is grateful to have her voice there. But it's just been frustrating because, you know, the ZIP code way that they do it and ensuring that we do have adequate access and what you've been able to do, I think we just need to reinforce that again, just how important it is to have good-quality maps. And we shouldn't reinvent the wheel. I mean, if Penn State's got a great map, if Beaver County's got a great map, we should be able to put all of that stuff together within the remaining counties and come up with something that makes sense for the entire Commonwealth.
I can't agree more. I mean, the reason we did what we did, we had some great experience here with Michael Baker. I was frustrated as well. I have a responsibility for the funding that I get to make sure, and my commissioners are very responsible as well to make sure the funding we get is used properly. And this overbuild has been mentioned. We didn't want that to happen. We wanted to make sure that we hit the areas that needed it the most, and there wasn't enough data, simply put, for us to be able to figure that out and responsibly spend funding that we would have to make sure that we put it in those areas. So what Michael Baker came up with and what they did, and he knocked on 200 doors, everything that they did led us to a point where we could create a map. Like I said, we know we have 2,359 locations that need served. I don't know how many other counties have that specific data, but we do, we have it, we know how to get there. I believe we do have the roadmap, the blueprint of what we need to do. We're willing to help anybody go and do this. It's the most important, for me, it's one of the most important things that we've done, and I have to spend that money responsibly, and I'm not going to and I have to spend that money responsibly and I'm not going to do it based off of a guess.
Yeah, appreciate it. And hats off to the commissioners for making the investment. I think that was, that was crucial in getting it done. Thank you.
Representative, one other, one other thing related to this. So a lesson learned. FCC Form 477, many entities will take that data, recycle it, and publish it in a different color scheme or format. It's kind of the same thing recycled over and over. The first thing we did was we leveraged 911, I know we're not talking about public safety, but we did leverage 911 address level data instead of the census data to understand the true picture. So in coordination with Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, the likelihood that you'll be able to really hone in on some of these locations as opposed to general understanding via the Census Bureau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next question is from Representative Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate, you know, both the topic and the opportunity to have a bipartisan meeting. In your testimony, you touched on the digital divide and we recognize that. We see it in Westmoreland County and that divide that impacts not only property values because people aren't wanting to necessarily move in, but also business attraction. A couple of years ago, this committee held a hearing where they announced broadband was everywhere. And I wanted to get to the portion of your testimony that talked about upload speeds. Forty-two percent of those upload speeds fell below the 3 MBPS, you know? That is so low and I just was texting somebody from Monroeville. They're at 40.8 in their upload speed. So as we look to move forward and invest the money for the plan, can you talk about, we will be building for, like, our goal is going to be set here where that we're not going to achieve that divide if we can't either redefine what our minimum speed is? And what is the accountability if we're not hitting that?
Representative, thank you for the question. So through ARPA funding, the interim final rule states 100 megabits per second download speed and 100 megabits per second upload speed, if possible. If not, 100 down, 20 up. So considering that against the, which is very high speed and that's, that's a great goal to achieve. Considering the current definition of 23 down and 3 up, we have a lot of work to make up here. So raising the bar for the definition of broadband in the Commonwealth would encourage investments to make sure that we achieve that. And I want to borrow another term from ARPA as future-proof technology. So ensuring that we install something that is future-proof and is going to last for the next 30, 40 years, not next three or four years, I need reinvestment.
So being from a county that really struggles with broadband, you can see the potential of the overbuild game. Because what's going to happen with this 100 threshold is all existing areas are going to be, continue to be underserved. And so they're going to overbuild in those current spots. So would it be helpful for whatever we're doing moving forward that we recognize or prioritize between those? Because those more convenient urban areas are all going to qualify because 40 is nowhere close to 100. So they're just going to rebuild in the same spots, you know? And how would you recommend we would structure that difference?
I'll echo what Mr. Yoker said about ensuring that you allow funding to fix the areas that are considered unserved. And the first tier of unserved would be those that are already below 25 and 3. If we advance the definition and heighten that definition of broadband to 100 or 120, ensuring that we get those areas caught up, then allow funding for potential overbuild for one-provisor-only areas, things of that nature. And just to, a point of clarification, the ARPA funding does state that the goal is to serve unserved areas. But unserved definition right now is 25, 3 per the FCC. Getting those areas served will bring them up to a minimum of 120 down. And which is something that Lance has been stating is those areas may bypass some of the areas that are considered served now. So playing with definitions, would advise to heighten the definition as early as possible of broadband to make sure we achieve those goals.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Seeing no further questions, I would ask that the members of the panel stay in the room. If we could reach out to you later and then we will transition to the second panel. Second panel was Michael Brayden from Nokia and Sam Garfinkel from Metamech. As I stated before, we have written testimony that's been provided from groups such as Wayne Campbell from PA State Grange and Melissa Gates from the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. We appreciate every individual or group that has provided written testimony to us. And again, I would ask that the members of the panel not read testimony verbatim and just please follow talking points. Samantha, you may start when you're ready.
Thank you, Chairman Marshall and Chairman Matsey and the rest of the Consumer House Affairs Committee for having me here today. My name is Sam Garfinkel and I'm the Executive Director of Metamech Wireless Communities. We're Pennsylvania's first nonprofit wireless internet service provider, also called a WISP. And we significantly scaled up our capacity to respond to the digital inequities that were worsened by the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'll just give you a brief overview of how a nonprofit wireless internet service provider works and what we try to do in order to provide last-mile connectivity. So our mission is to leverage existing community resources to bridge the digital divide in southwestern Pennsylvania. And so to do this, we deploy wireless infrastructure that's very affordable and it can provide broadband speeds of 50 megabits per second download, 25 megabits per second upload. And we utilize 5 gigahertz unlicensed frequencies in order to keep this service affordable to our customers. After we design the network, we co-locate that infrastructure on existing structures or buildings in order to blanket a community in broadband. The other somewhat novel approach for the nonprofit wireless internet service provider is the use of a social enterprise business model, which effectively allows local institutions to sponsor the monthly cost of internet on the end user's behalf. This cost is about $45 a month. And the reason that the sponsoring entities shoulder that burden on behalf of the end user is because they have an existing responsibility, be it monetary, programmatic, or even legally, to connect their constituency so that they can deliver those online services that they're currently offering. And so, but often these groups do not have the capability to extend internet services themselves. And so we are a third-party community network solutions that they can invest their money in and it can ultimately allow Pennsylvanian consumers to receive broadband internet services at no cost to them. And we know that, oh, and I'd like to say that by 2024, we'd like to be serving 6,650 Pennsylvanians in rural and urban communities through this nonprofit WISP. So we know that for rural communities, the lack of access to broadband also means the lack of access to essential health, education, and employment services, among so many other things. We also know that large corporations, incumbent ISPs, have considered it too costly to extend their network to these remote locations. So, and while monetary costs will always be top of mind, we're in a capital-heavy field in the telecom industry. We're in a unique position as a 501(c)(3) charitable organization to put people and their needs before profit. And so ultimately, what we are focusing on is mitigating the societal cost that would be the result of segmenting whole populations off from interacting with the global public square. And so wireless technology is often referred to as one of the last-mile solutions. The idea being to transport the power of fiber optic technology, which is middle mile, direct to consumers' homes. And wireless technology is a very cost-effective way to do that. Meaning that it can carry that bandwidth across far distances and ultimately requires less fiber, even though it does require fiber backhaul, less fiber for more people. And so Metamech has demonstrated the efficacy of using Metamech, excuse me, wireless technology through the build of actually a 20-mile long-distance wireless link from our backhaul at the Cathedral of Learning in Pittsburgh, Oakland, to New Kensington, in fact, which is some 20 miles away. And this build alone will serve up to 150 households in New Kensington and it will allow us to expand to the surrounding high-neat areas in the Alakiskey Valley. So that being said, there are certainly constraints to using unlicensed frequencies because it is dependent on what's called line of sight. Obstructions, be they foliage or terrain, can compromise the quality of the signal. And that's because it's simply on the lower strength of the frequency band. And those higher frequencies are licensed for specific use and are often quite expensive to use. And so to accommodate for line of sight, we have to build additional infrastructure to basically relay that signal to multiple points within the community to maximize the number of homes that can see or be connected. And so one of the recommendations I'll offer here today is that we compel the FCC to open up some of those higher licensed frequencies for public use or to lower the cost to use some of those higher frequencies. In addition to that, you know, infrastructure investments are often also a barrier for non-traditional service providers like Metamech. In New Kensington, we have the opportunity to actually co-locate our equipment on a Crown Castle-owned tower, which gives a great view into town and will create a really excellent quality of service for those community members. That being said, that infrastructure investment alone will cost $50,000 upfront and then a subsequent $600 per month to lease. So for a small nonprofit like ourselves, this is a significant investment. So ultimately, I'll just say, we believe, like the others who have mentioned it here today, that there is no single solution to the last-mile challenge. But we can collaborate through nonprofits, governments, community institutions, and commercial providers to serve those unserved areas. But in order for this blended approach to be successful and replicable for use in other places across our country, we do have to level the playing field, both from a funding and regulatory perspective. State and federal funding should promote collaborative efforts and should seek to broaden the range of last-mile solutions like wireless to create more options for end users. Secondarily, we should also take a look at regulatory legislation that should be reviewed in order to create more opportunities for providers to solve this broadband issue or to streamline that process for faster deployment. And additionally, decision-making around funding should include voices from all sectors of this industry, including nonprofits, community members, and anchor institutions that service them. And so in this way, we are able to use existing community resources, be they monetary, structural, technical expertise, or people networks themselves to redirect to bridging the digital divide in our region. And so thanks to the thoughtful support of our strategic partners, including University of Pittsburgh and Carnegie Mellon University, we've engaged in a distributed leadership model to engage with our community partners and deploy a program called Everyone Online. This is that subsidized internet program I was describing earlier. We also received support as a nonprofit from foundations like the Pittsburgh Foundation, the Heinz Endowments, and the Richard King Mellon Foundation, who are really enthusiastic about solving this issue. And we are demonstrating right now that the nonprofit approach to internet service provision actually underpins the societal infrastructure that it takes to move an individual or family from an unconnected state to a connected one. And so in summary, I'd ask this committee to consider three recommendations that could immediately provide benefits to rural communities regarding broadband. The first would be to compel the FCC to open up those higher frequencies for use. And the second would be to encourage more non-traditional service providers by designating funding programs as exclusively available to non-incumbents. And also ensure that these funding opportunities account for the outreach and marketing efforts that it takes to actually build trust and thus build that user base. And lastly, I would ask this committee to consider enhancing funding for the wireless infrastructure that's required to retransmit fiber broadband into communities directly. I hope this testimony gave you a better view of what Metamech is doing to provide last-mile connectivity and I welcome the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Michael, if you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me now? A famous Verizon saying. To the committee members, to the chairs, thank you so much for letting Nokia come before you today. Let me start to go backwards to go forwards just a little bit because the most common question I get in the U.S. when I say we're from Nokia is, are you still making phones? And I want to just give you a tiny bit of background about our corporation. And with that in your pockets, right, then I'll explain why we are so happy to be here today with all of you on this very, very important topic. So the Nokia Corporation is actually three corporations brought together under the Finnish banner. So it is the Finns and Nokia, the phones you remember, the French and Alcatel. But probably most importantly here for the U.S. is that this is also Lucent Technologies. Or if you're old enough, Bell Labs and Western Electric. So you remember us as the purveyors of the telephone, the laser, the marriage of picture movies and sound, right? So if you watch John Wayne westerns, right, when you get to the credits at the bottom, you see Western Electric. So we are technology purveyors. So the phones in your pockets, the internet, and the magic that makes those wireless towers come to life and carries the internet, that is us. 3,000 patents a year, 30,000 active patents, 100,000 souls in 163 countries. So the reason that we're here today, one is obvious, one not necessarily so obvious. So there is a decision made by our federal government. Money is about to flow in a fashion that is once in a generation for community broadband. And a real chance for us to close, as a community, to close a digital divide. As the colleagues before the two of us spoke and, and what Samantha had to say today, it's all true. We need to come to Pennsylvania, which is really a microcosm of the U.S., and come up with ways to take the capital that is about to arrive, come up with a broadband plan, be thoughtful about that plan, and position those capital dollars where they can do Pennsylvanians the most good. Now, we are gunrunners by trade, right? So if you're on Verizon Wireless, if you're on AT&amp;T, U-verse, if you do FiOS, if you work with T-Mobile behind the scenes, that's us. If you work with Allegheny Power or Pennsylvania Power and Light or Philly Power and their mission-critical networks, that's us. So the trick, we believe, from Nokia, as we have seen the decisions that have been made in the last seven days in Washington come to play, is we've made a conscious decision to come to the states and talk to all of you, to offer our help, our assistance, our resources to help you to educate your consumers, educate yourselves, learn about the technologies that are available to play. As my colleague said, one size is not going to fit all. If you go to the major carriers today, and there are two players, one in cable, one in telephony, and there is mobile, their solutions are one-size-fits-all. But in Pennsylvania, what will work in inner-city Philadelphia to provide community broadband is not going to work in Mansfield. It's not going to work in Green County. So we need to help you, to educate you, and to educate your constituents on the possibilities of the techn- of the technology that can be brought to bear. Why is that important? Because, as was said here earlier today, there are methodologies that need to be put in place to help you if you decide to build a broadband authority, like the state of Washington, and Louisiana, and Ohio. I think Pennsylvania will, I hope you do, right, so that you can focus your energies into creating decisions to get your unserved, and then your underserved, and then if there's money available for those who have built once, and they want to meet your guidelines of 100 down and 100 up, or 200 down and 200 up, or a gig to every home, have at it, right? If the capital is available, it's fantastic, right? And for us, since we have been in business, our three corporations now under the Nokia banner for over 125 years, we believe that building something sustainable for the state of Pennsylvania is critical to your thinking as the two committees that are sitting here today. You have a unique, as I said, once-in-a-generational opportunity to build something for Pennsylvania that keeps the kids here, that brings the industry here, right? Those are important considerations for your communities of interest. And if the pandemic hasn't shown us anything at all, other than I had to fight my better half for time on the Internet at home and a place to work, we will probably be a hybrid in the way we work and interface with each other going forward around the world. We've seen it. And what's about to happen here in Pennsylvania, it's happening in Canada, it's about to happen in Japan, it's happening in Europe while we're talking here. The governmental bodies are bringing the capital to bear to build this connectivity around the world. So for us, there is a couple of other points we would like to make, though. Eighty-some years ago, here in Pennsylvania and around the United States, communities got together because the big companies would not bring electricity to their communities of interest. There is expertise and wherewithal and abilities inside of your rural electric co-ops and some of your community electrical systems that could really help you jump-start this process. They understand infrastructure, they have the intelligence to build networks, to work with the mapping people who were up here earlier today with the Farm Bureau, and they can help you jump-start this industry. We work with other cooperatives here around the U.S. Folks have put their toes in the water here in Pennsylvania at Trico. Soon, I think Claverack will join. There are others. And what Nokia will offer as part of this process is we will help them build business models so that they can find the right mix to build networks that are sustainable for last-mile providers to ride on, to deliver this connectivity. And I agree with my colleague. I think that, honestly, there is a place for wireless that can jump-start and bring connectivity quickly, fast, efficient, affordable to the network. Since we're the purveyors of the 5G technology you have in your pockets, don't get too comfortable, we're working on 6G while we're talking here on the phone, chance for the phone makers to sell some more devices. The technology is coming fast and furious, and the auctions are finishing up. There should be more spectrum available in the lower bands to provide, because that has the longest distance. It's not the fastest, but it can reach a lot of people quickly. So with that, I want to thank you again for your time, and I'll thank you in advance, both committees, for your energy, because you have a big task in front of you folks, and we're here to give you a hand in making those concepts become reality. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our first question is from Representative Carl Metzger.
Mr. Brayden, one of the challenges that we have in developing rules, regulations, and laws in the Commonwealth to develop this technology is that we're trying to develop those for the entire Commonwealth. And like you said, that we have many different issues as you look across the Commonwealth. I come from an area, a mountainous rural area, Somerset in Bedford County, and recognizing that Nokia is an innovator, I'm curious as to what you would recommend for an area, you know, such as downtown Glencoe, Somerset County, Pennsylvania, where you have to pipe in sunshine. And I can challenge anyone, any ILEC out there to show me how that we have broadband service in Glencoe, Pennsylvania. What would Nokia recommend? Rather than just throwing gobs of money at the problem, what is the solution?
Yeah, yes. I, well, thank you, first of all, thank you for the question. And as I said to someone yesterday, and I agree with this statement, throwing capital, throwing gobs of capital at this problem, we've seen that before, and we've seen the results before, and I think it's happened in Pennsylvania as well. So some thoughtfulness from this committee is the first step. But to answer your question, it has not been an easy road to bring the kinds of speeds and feeds to a community of interest like yourself. So if you think about the problem, there are two ways to go at it, right? The fastest and longest-lasting solution, of course, is to bring fiber to the homes and businesses in your community, okay? But it's also the most expensive, because those hills that you live in, right, you need a diamond drill to drill in for the poles, right, that go in the ground for the most part, right? It's not an easy build, it's very expensive. And as all of you know here, I'm probably all too well, once the business cases for the larger players don't make sense to them, they never come to play in your community. We're working on a technology, and it is in the docket, and if you want to call it my testimony, in the slide deck, and I'd be happy to point it out to you, where there is one slide that has a proof of concept in it that we'll be developing over the next 18 months. And we'll be trialing it first offshore in Japan, soon to come to the U.S. And it is a variant of the 5G technology, but the 5G technology basically is brought right into your home. So it is a combination of fiber optics networks, as my colleague talked about, and a wireless solution at the far end. Now, the trick of 5G is, as you know, as you saw the commercials on TV when it first came out, and it was in the high-frequency range, which means it was super-fast and went from me to you, right? And it was called millimeter-wave technology. Great for NFL stadiums, great for NASCAR, right, where you're in a fixed area. But if I walk through the door of a building, the signal dropped. If I walked around the corner, the signal dropped. There were problems, right? So we have changed that structure, right? And you've seen the auctions in Washington, hundreds of billions of dollars are changing hands, right, in order to find the right frequencies to deliver the technology to a place like yourselves. So it's going to be a combination of fiber, possibly microwave, and then a new solution to basically create, I'll call it, a blanket, right, over your community of interest that will allow for the speeds and feeds to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank all of our testifiers so far today. If Representative Metzger doesn't want those gobs of money, I'll take it in Allentown anytime he wants, Carl. And I can, and given the fact that he gets sunburn in these lights, you can tell parts of his district don't actually get sunlight. So Carl, good seeing you, as always. We have the exact opposite problem. I represent the city of Allentown, so not quite Philadelphia, but third-largest city in Commonwealth Pennsylvania. And our region, even though we're vastly growing, we're in a valley, but we have large swaths of relatively flat land, we're in a valley, and the slowest download speeds and are rapidly growing, rapidly increasing wealthy communities is our urban core. We have extensive, I'm assuming it's some, and I know nothing about technology, but aside from the fact that it doesn't always work, and a lot of those needs are, it seems like it's old 3G technology mostly throughout the Lehigh Valley, and specifically in the urban core of downtown Allentown. And I know this is not unique, particularly in the non-Philadelphia, non-Pittsburgh regions of Pennsylvania, where you have these counties that are growing, you have an urban center, whether it's the city of York, the city of Harrisburg, the city of Lancaster, and you have the wealthier suburbs around it that have newer technology as it's being built out. What are some of the ways that we can use some of these dollars in a way to increase access for those largely underserved populations, when my district's one of the poorest between Philadelphia and Pittsburgh and the Commonwealth? How do we increase access for those folks, affordability for those folks, using the existing technology so that we could do so in a cost-effective manner?
So take a swing, or I'll take the first swing? Okay. So I lived in Bethlehem for five years.
It's a cute little town next to us.
It's a cute little town next door. We have a little Christmas thing that we do every year. So now I'm back at the end of Route 81, last exit before Canada. So I was there in the '90s when things were not going so well in Allentown or in Bethlehem. I would tell you that there are a couple of ideas as this 5G technology, or what we call fixed wireless access, starts to come to play, both from the carrier perspective or from the private perspective. So there is nothing to stop WISPs from building private LTE and coming to the forefront to provide Internet services in a place like Allentown. Now, since I was there, I think you've built a few buildings, and things have really turned around quite a bit in your town, your next-door neighbor, right? But for the people in Amayis and Parkland, and even where I lived in Old Farm Development, I mean, the problem is just nonexistent to us, right? But if I go to the middle of Allentown, which was kind of a bring-your-own-gun kind of a place maybe 15 years ago, as things start to turn, what can be built now, the technology exists, the trick is that inside of Allentown, and Samantha kind of talked to it just a little bit, you need to find places, not just the towers that Crown Castle builds for 600K and then rents out and makes a small fortune on, but you can bring the 5G technology and soon 6G technology, you can bring it in tighter to the buildings. The trick is for the city to help whoever's going to come to play to have access to the roadways, to build either microtrenching or conduit system so we can put the fiber backhaul into motion. Now, the federal government has changed the SNAP program a little bit, but between the USF and the SNAP program, there's going to be dollars available, probably about $30 a month, that will come to the folks that cannot afford it. Now, I don't know if Pennsylvania will create a different set of rules than the federal government. I suspect they will as to who will qualify, right, for support in this kind of a play. But if the WISPs could gain access to put their sites on towers and buildings and locations within the city that the city owns, they can create this environment, I called it a cover for the previous gentleman's question, but they can create a cover over Allentown. It can be done by the carriers, right, the typical T-Mobils, Horizons, and AT&amp;Ts, but it can also be done privately, and it can be built in a way with a little help, a little public-private partnership, it can be put to life.
You also bring up a point, if I may, and this will be my last question, Mr. Chairman, because I know we're pressed for time. You also bring up a point that the carriers most likely will be providing some kind of low-income incentive or some assistance for those folks. And you know, you referenced $30 a month, whether or not that's ultimately what it is, who knows? That's not for conversation. But I believe there's going to be a human capital role here in making sure that people know this. Government's really good at creating programs, then not investing anything in making sure people can actually get access to it. My colleagues know my frustration with PA Power Switch as a, for example. And so there needs to be an investment on that side of it as well, there's a human side to it at all. And when you talk about fiber and the moving forward on the last mile, with transient populations like we have in mind, I mean, 70% of my district are renters. With that transient population, I can wire somebody's house with fiber, and they can move in the next six months. And yeah, somebody else moves in, maybe they have the financial means to be able to connect to that, but odds are they don't. So that investment in the wireless last mile is more than just an investment in trying to help folks that live a mile away from the tower, but really, it's also those folks that move frequently, and it's just easier for them to have a phone or a hotspot. And so any, your continued thoughts, your guidance on this is going to be very helpful to us, because there's more to the wireless conversation and the broadband conversation than non-served, and certainly extraordinarily important, I'm not diminishing that, but there's also those underserved populations, so.
Yeah. Do not disagree with any of your comments. I mean, there are, as I said before, Pennsylvania is really a microcosm of the states. You have the inner cities, you have very sparse rural areas that butt up against the state where I live. You know, we're going to have to find and help you find multiple solutions for the problems. Affordability is going to be an issue, but in order to bring the ISPs, with the exception of the 503 here, but with most players, right, they're looking to have something that is sustainable. Now, you know, I mean, as a young lad, I put up a fiber optic cable in front of the arena where the Russians got beat in Lake Placid when I was a kid working for New York Telephone. That cable is still in service. We placed it in 1979, and we do weather tests on it today. And it wasn't the first in the United States, but one of the first, certainly. So there's a tremendous sustainability in the middle-mile networks that you've built. We purvey the electronics on both ends of it. We see it as limitless, right? It's the colors of the rainbow. So we do have to really struggle on the last mile, as you described. We have to find something that we can build that is, as you said, affordable, but also allows for this transient to take place. So we have some challenges, and of course, you know, we think that we can help you with some of the answers with the technology.
I'll also add that there are digital inclusion workers in Allentown doing excellent work exactly in this vein. We can build upon the work that they've already started, and they're going to be the ones who are the most embedded with your community members, that are probably the most skeptical of new programs, free services. That's a huge challenge for us as well. But to that point as well, there is funding in the community already earmarked for solving this issue. It's flooding our school districts, it's going to libraries. They need a solution for those earmarked funds. So we don't have to raise brand-new capital to solve this issue, it does exist already within the community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is for Nokia. The two rural electrics that you mentioned are both within my district, and we're very excited about their build-out, one on the way and one about to start in '22, but a little bit nervous also. But it strikes me as I listen to you that while we've had a really rough time for the last couple of years with lack of service, and it's the number-one call in my office, there's no question about it, we may be at a good place in an odd way, in that if they have the correct knowledge and ability to do what they want to do with the funds that they're now having come available to them, we may be able to do something that's really going to be outstanding. You mentioned them, and that kind of surprised me. Are you in communication with those rural electrics? Are they, what advice would you have for them, maybe that they're aware of not doing something that isn't going to be the best build-out with these dollars and this opportunity that they have in their hands? Any thoughts on that?
Well, a couple of thoughts. So it boiled down to two companies when we were working with Craig before he retired. We did not win that bid. One of our partners is providing the fiber optic cable and doing all of the logistics for them right now, which is about 80 cents of every dollar that will actually get spent when this money shows up at the table. So for them, we spent a lot of time with Aaron, we spent a lot of time with Craig, although we are not the technology purveyors. A company that I helped start years ago back in California is. I'm very confident that the products that they're going to bring to the table are going to meet the needs of your constituents, no question about it. The difficulty, as I talked about, the 80 cents of the dollar for them, is to be very intelligent about how intelligent about how they construct their network. Now, they're sitting in the most wonderful of all places because they're going to build out. Word of mouth is going to come to play. They have made a serious commitment to it. We have also talked to them, as my colleague sitting next to me runs our energy piece here in the five-state area, about, you know, leveraging the fiber optic technology to smarten up the grid, although they do a very good job with the costs of electricity in your constituency compared to what my kids paid in other places in Pennsylvania, won't go into that. But the net of it is, is that I think they do a really, really fine job. And it's a hometown team. This is one of the comments I made earlier. We're very hopeful, Michael and I, that we'll be able to talk to additional co-ops here in the state. Now, I know some are very adverse to wanting to get into taking that 2 o'clock call when somebody's Apple TV doesn't connect up to the network, and they've got to do that. I know that Trico is stepping up to that customer service, and I'm sure that there, as I have found with co-ops around the United States that have built these networks, because they're the hometown team, they take a special interest in when things go wrong, right? Very similar to the WISP that's been being built here in Pittsburgh, right? So I'm very confident in them. I'll be very honest with you, Representative. I am very confident in them. The young man that's running the show came from upstate New York, out of the Empire Telephone Company. They've built this network before with our gear as opposed to the other gear they're using now. They are very successful, cash flow positive. So it will take a little time, and that would be one comment back to you as we go forward. The one thing that Nokia's, and we have designed business cases for whole countries. We're building Germany right now and Poland, my counterpart in Europe. So we will bring that resource to bear for other entities here in the state if asked. And with the mapping that was talked about here earlier today, building GIS and QGIS databases in order to find out, and you know, we can talk about the census tracts till the cows come home, I think they were used against us, frankly, if you're in rural America. But I don't want to get too political. I've been up on the Hill and had my conversations with Mr. Pye, know his parents pretty well. So I was a little unhappy. I think that we're on the right track now. This new database that will come out, I think, will help the whole country, and I think it will help Pennsylvanians. But I'd be confident in what Trico is doing and what Claverex is about to do. They have some good people.
Thank you so much. I'll continue to tell my people light is on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great second panel with nonprofit provider and a global provider. You know, from my perspective, today is the Marine Corps birthday, and as we look at building out technology and grid, security, public safety are really critical components. You know, so in your testimony, you had mentioned, you know, gun runners or the technology to smarten up the grid. Nokia does outsource or source some components from China. Can you touch on what our panel in Pennsylvania, you know, needs to have some critical components so that we ensure the safety of these systems on that international scale?
Well, that's a loaded one. So a couple of points I would make. It's a problem, right? I went, a small story, right? So I was on vacation when I got the phone call to come up here. So I went to buy a shirt, Brooks Brothers. Walked into the store, I'd been there years ago. I was in West Palm Beach, and asked the gentleman for a shirt, my size. And he says, you know, let me make a couple of calls. And I'm like, well, it looks like the inventory's a little low here. And he says, all my product is on a boat in the ocean off of Long Beach. I said, funny, right? The folks at Vacation Club said that their furniture is also on that same boat, and so are my routers, right? To help Verizon and AT&amp;T and T-Mobile build out their 5G networks. So behind the scenes, Nokia, because of our resources, we have diversified now our supply chain, and we will not go through this process again. But to answer specifically your question, if you have GPON or XGS-PON from Nokia or Calix or Atrian, right, that chipset that we're using right now, it's coming from the same place. It is a big problem. All three of us, even though we compete pretty aggressively in this market here in the United States, we have all started to diversify our chains to Vietnam, to other places. There is a consortium that is about to find a landing spot here in the United States and invest about $12.5 billion to build these chips, next generation of chips. When it comes to our routing protocols, though, our routers that are in the backend of the internet or at the base of the towers and the cell towers, that silicon is developed here in the United States out of our division that we bought a number of years ago in Silicon Valley. Our silicon is homemade. It's special. It's not what our competitors that are in the routing market, you know the biggest one with a C. Their stuff is off the shelf. Ours is not. That's why we just won the cybersecurity contract with the federal government. We build something that goes inside of the mission-critical networks, both for the military and for the utilities that are here in this state, that is designed in such a way that it cannot be shaken down in a DDoS attack. And we're very proud of that, and I've been involved in two of them in the utilities here in the U.S. And they went through other providers that were in the peering, like Swiss cheese, but when they got to us, we stopped them dead cold. Thank God. But to your point, we have a lesson here that we have learned, unfortunately, the hard way, and the pandemic kind of brought it to the forefront. So sometimes shipping things to the cheapest providers to get you the lowest possible prices is not necessarily the best plan. So we have brought our final configurations back to our NAFTA sister countries, right, for final assembly. And like one of our major competitors in the mobile networks, they have brought their manufacturing back to the United States. We're in the process of doing something very similar. And I think the new chipset consortium that is going to be developed here in the U.S., and you asked a fantastically relevant and excellent question, we are changing the way we bring our supply chain into this country.
Thank you. Question from Representative McKenzie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all of our testifiers. Obviously, a very important topic that we're dealing with here today is connectivity for all citizens across the Commonwealth, not just in rural areas, but we've heard about the challenges in all different parts of the states and in certain pockets especially. But so my question relates to kind of the advances in technology that we're seeing, the speed at which things are advancing, and then also the cost to connectivity, particularly those middle and last miles that we're talking about now. I want to just introduce kind of a, maybe an analogy that we can think about, and it's one of Africa from about 15 to 20 years ago, where they were dealing with rural connectivity for telephone. And ultimately, they ended up finding that it was cost prohibitive to string those telephone lines across parts of rural Africa to get connectivity. And all of a sudden, wireless technology developed and became cost-effective enough that that was deployed across the continent, and all of a sudden wireless subscriptions, you know, shot through the roof. Millions of people had access, and they jumped a whole generation without spending that money on building out a telephone network on the continent. So with that in mind, how should we be thinking about deploying and getting connectivity to people across Pennsylvania? Is there technology coming that makes it possible to, in a more cost-effectively way, through either wireless, you know, expanded wireless or satellite or any kind of other technology that doesn't require that physical infrastructure on the ground? Is that coming, and should we be thinking about that in terms of getting connectivity to people in Pennsylvania?
I'll just add a comment. We often talk about wireless as bringing yesterday's technology to people today, those who do not have it. And so there's always, in technology, as you described, there's always going to be an evolution and next best. And similarly, there might always be a private sector offering that is better than perhaps a nonprofit offering. But the point being that if we keep looking forward to the next best thing, we're leaving people behind without picking them up and carrying them along with us. So investments in wireless and other last-mile solutions that maybe aren't on the bleeding edge are still very much worthwhile for our communities.
So you're right about what happened to Africa. So Nokia had to grab our cable queens and build a fiber optic cable from Saudi Arabia around the Cape and touch all those countries because the network, the backhaul network, collapsed in real time. So we have just completed a run from Saudi Arabia to Gibraltar, looping in and out of all those countries to create a backhaul through the, what we call dense-wave division, multiplexing to handle all the traffic. You're right, it was an explosion. Now, Samantha's point, though, the money will come rather soon, right, to the Commonwealth. Wireless technology, we learned our lessons about millimeter wave and the extent of what it could do to serve communities of interest. And so a lot of money has changed hands as the FCC has opened up additional spectrums. Wireless in your home, Wi-Fi 6, Wi-Fi 7, Wi-Fi 8, 5G, 6G, 7G, yes. The devices in your home, for the most part, will be wireless, right? Your car will have wireless technology. The trains today, you can hop on the internet while you're on a train. It will get better. It will get faster. There is no question about it. However, it all comes to a backhaul point of fiber, and so the fiber is the long-term play. To the gentleman who talked about his community not seeing sunlight, we are going to have to find, and Nokia's in a unique position, there's only one other company in the world, and they're not allowed to do business in the U.S. right now, that can provide a toolbox for you. I do agree with Samantha, though. The moment is now. The technologies exist. We will be delivering in Japan and in another country 25 gig symmetrical to the home this year to people. We do not even sell 1 gig symmetrical anymore. We sell 10 gig symmetrical. And so the large carriers can bring solutions to the table now that will be very long-sustaining for the Commonwealth. The technology that will come to forefront is going to be available to do the 100 down and the 20 up on a wireless solution set. It won't be long, we'll have it there. So to just overbuild the state with wireless, however, the number of towers that you would need and the amount of money that you would charge, and this is why Nokia is offering our business model that we've used for countries to you gratis, right, as your constituents need it, to look at those alternatives. And so your point is perfect because for this two sets of committees, you really need to have a tool through your broadband authority to look at the alternative technologies that can be brought to Beaver County versus somebody who is up in the Trico turf or someone who is in between Drexler and Penn in inner-city Philadelphia, right? And we'll offer that tool to you folks to help you to make that business decision. I hope that helps you.
Thank you, Representative.
Yeah, thank you. Can I just make a closing comment?
We are 30 minutes behind, but if you can briefly do that.
Just very briefly, thank you. No, I appreciate the comments from both of you and your input. I would kind of hit on your last remark there about, you know, thinking about all of those different technologies as we move forward. And I would just encourage both of our committees, as we do move forward in this process, to keep those advanced technologies in mind, be thinking about their applications and how we can use them across the Commonwealth to bring connectivity. And I appreciate the comments of both of you here, but hopefully, we can also, as we move forward, expand the voices that are taking part in this discussion, because I think there are some others out there that aren't represented here today that may have new technologies that we would like to consider as well. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would stay for possible questions afterwards, we'd like to transition into the next group. While we're transitioning, I'd like to take the time again to thank Senator John Kane and Senator Kristin Phillips Hill and all the members of the Senate Communications and Technology Committee that have joined us today. I'd like to thank Chairman Matsey and all of the members. We had a great turnout for this public hearing, and I appreciate all that were able to attend, especially Representative Pam Snyder, who's been a true leader in broadband, and she is joining us remotely, and appreciate that from her. Our final group today is Todd Echus from Broadband Cable Associations of Pennsylvania, Steve Samara from Pennsylvania Telephone Association, and Jim Rosie from DQE Fiber. Gentlemen, who's ever ready to start first? Like the chipmunks. Go ahead, Todd.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Marshall, Chairman Matsey, Chairman Kane, and the absent Senator Phillips Hill. Chairman, thank you very much to both committees for holding this hearing. It's timely. It's important. And I am grateful to have the opportunity to speak to you today on behalf of the Broadband Cable Association of Pennsylvania, of whom I am the current president. We represent cable operators from across the Commonwealth, from the very largest in the nation to very small operators, independent, private companies who, by the way, invest tens of thousands of Pennsylvanians with life and family-sustaining jobs, not just directly, but amongst the contract universe as well for folks who build service and maintain these networks. I would also tell you that in the last two decades or so, these companies have invested $10 billion of private capital into the networks that you see today. And the good news is that a vast number of Pennsylvanians are currently served or have the opportunity, have access to broadband service. I might add, mostly at a gigabit, but we do recognize that there are those unserved elements and locations across our Commonwealth, and it is important to join together here, talk about how we solve that solution. Our members serve residents in all 67 counties across the Commonwealth, and we are intimately familiar with the complexities of the problems presented here today. And one of the compelling messages that I think this committee has to consider is, and it's been said here earlier today, this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity, perhaps, with the funding that is available. But I would remind you that this is one-time funding to extend these networks, to provide the necessary access across the Commonwealth. But it is going to take experienced operators, managers of these networks, who are willing to bring the risk capital in the future to continue to upgrade these networks, continue to manage them, and continue to allow them to meet the needs in the future. We've heard a lot of talk here about speeds. That is driven by the market. We don't know the next app being developed by a kid in a garage somewhere that's going to take multiple gigabits, and the market will respond, and the market will respond with private risk capital to upgrade those networks to meet the needs of the consumer and business demands. And so as we look at how we approach this, we would urge caution. I think what we don't want to do is look at each other in five or seven years and say, wow, we had a lot of capital and we did not solve this problem. Collectively... Collectively, we owe it to the residents of our Commonwealth to get this right and to be very careful and measured in the approach to getting this right. There are so many complexities and so many challenges to building these networks, from the cost of extending a network, which is why not every single home is served, to understanding the barriers and obstacles, to access to rights of way, local permitting process, make-ready and pole attachment processes, et cetera. So none of these networks will be built quickly. But what I do believe is that while the private sector has not solved the access issue to date, I don't believe the government can. I believe that together, though, we can. And what that means is understanding that private risk capital, a model that will alter the economics to get there, which requires operators to put some of their own investment and skin in the game in order to receive these one-time opportunities to fund these And there's some really simple things that will make the program right, I believe. A technology-neutral approach. Not one technology is going to address every situation across the Commonwealth. A model that helps alter the economics, as I just said. A model that does not impose, part of the reason that we've had great success nationally is because broadband, in the emerging technologies and the wonders that are the Internet that has been so transformative to our economy, has been dealt with with a light regulatory touch. And that light regulatory touch needs to continue so that operators, investors, creators of all stripes can continue to innovate, invest, and lead the way. And I will close with this very briefly. We should be proud of the networks that are present today. The pandemic, as we have all acknowledged, has driven us to rise the issue of broadband to the top. While it's always been discussed previously and for many years, the pandemic showed us that with the work from school or the work from home, the educate from home, the additional needs and demands, our networks were amazingly resilient. And that was because of the private invested capital, billions and billions of dollars, that allowed those networks to continue to operate. Contrast with Europe, who had asked residents to stop streaming in high definition and reduce to standard definition because the networks were unstable with the increased demand. So we have met it, we look forward to solving these issues. And I would ask you to think of these in two ways, because we've heard so many great issues this morning. And I would urge you just to think of our Commonwealth and the challenges to access in two ways. Yes, there are counties and places like Representative Metzger's district that have large rural areas that need to be addressed. But so much of this also is an edge-of-network element, where there are boroughs and towns and cities across the Commonwealth where they're 99.9% served, but there's that edge-of-network, the last mile, the last five or six or seven poles that have only two or three homes, that the economics didn't allow for service. And there can be a way to solve for those issues, and I think we will find that there are many, many unserved customers. And so finally, the closing point which has been driven home here today previously is that it is critically important that these funds address unserved areas as the number-one priority. I thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. Steve?
Good morning, Chairman Marshall, Chairman Matsey, Chairman Kane, members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And Chairwoman Phillips Hill, who just came back. Thanks for the opportunity, appreciate it. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Pennsylvania Telephone Association, we represent all the rural local exchange carriers in Pennsylvania. RLEX, lots of acronyms and abbreviations in our world, so I'll try and keep that to a minimum. But they all have a bunch of unique characteristics that make them RLEX. This first one isn't necessarily a requirement to be a member of the PTA, but they've all been around for decades, some for a century or more. They all serve rural areas, which is self-evident in the name of RLEX and the acronym. They are also carriers of last resort for landline service, which is a unique designation. That is, if you move into one of my member company's service territories and want landline voice service, we have to provide it to you. That is unique. No one here at this table has that designation, nor are they regulated fully by the PUC. I'm not suggesting that they be, because I'm not wearing my shin guards, and I think either under the table, it would probably kick me under the table if I suggested that. But we are looking to modernize the regulatory paradigm here in Pennsylvania on behalf of my member companies, because it is a very competitive environment out there. I will give kudos to the PUC. They recently passed an order, which takes some initial steps to get the Public Utility Code with regard to telcos a little more modernized, recognizing that we are in a competitive environment. And we'll talk a little bit about that later. But my member companies are unique in that regard, because they stand apart as providers of last resort, and not only for landline service, but for broadband as well. Little bit of the history of broadband in Pennsylvania, I don't know how many folks on the panel know it. We do have the only state statute that requires universal broadband availability in Pennsylvania. Looking at the day, I think only Representative Pickett was here when we passed Act 183. Congratulations, Tina, for sticking around that long and seeing this through. The gold standard back in 2004, and hold your Snickers till the end, was 1.544 megabits. That was DSL back in 2004. It is not the gold standard anymore today, we know that, but back then, that's what we were all aspiring to deploy everywhere. And again, the only state law that I know of that requires broadband availability to everyone by a date certain. If you have any questions about what my member companies have done in that regard, I would suggest you take a look at last June's Legislative Budget Finance Committee report, which did an analysis of what they've all done, not only my member companies, but Verizon as well, in deploying broadband by a date certain. And that was teed up by Senator Phillips Hill, Senate Resolution 48. So there is a study out there that takes a look at what they've done under the original act. But the act also facilitated deployment above and beyond that. Obviously, my member companies are going beyond the 1.544 megabits in broad swaths of the state. Give you a couple examples from two actual PTA member companies, one small, one large. Small company, under 10,000 access lines, and I think this is fairly typical, over 500 square miles of territory, about 17 structures per plant mile, structures, not necessarily inhabited households or small businesses, but structures. They are 99.9 something percent fiber deployed to their customers. None of it has been funded by any of the federal programs we're talking about here today. They use their own capital to do it. And almost 70% of those subscribing to service are subscribing to it under the federal definition of broadband. So under the 25.3 that we've heard mentioned earlier today. So when we talk about unserved and underserved, it's helpful to keep in mind what's happening out there in a real-world environment. I don't think this company would consider 70% of its customer base to be unserved or underserved, but by the definition, technically, they would be. Now, when you take a look at affordability, which we talk about as well, the compression between price levels and speed levels is diminutive for all of my member companies. So it's not an affordability issue necessarily. I understand some folks don't want to spend $5 or $10 more a month to go from 3 to 5 meg, or from 5 to 10, or whatever. But they're offering service that they think their customers will purchase and are using. For a large company example, one of my larger companies, 70% of its households have broadband service at the 25.3 definition. 60% at 100 megabits. Two years ago, that number was 37%. More than 40% have gig access, which is fiber to the premises. We talked a little bit about fiber optic cable here and how important that is. That 40% number was 4.5% two years ago. This company's invested over $100 million in broadband over the past three years, and this company is taking advantage of some of the federal broadband programs that are out there to help them deploy. In addition to that, the RLEX in the state are doing a couple things. It's not just give us the bucks to get stuff done, as was alluded to earlier. Senate Bill 341 is our effort to get regulation modernized for my member companies to get us where we need to be. I mentioned the PUC order, it's moving in the right direction, those are initial steps to get us there. I think that's all important. Working with Senator Kristen Phillips Hill on Senate Bill 341, I think gets us closer, even closer to where we need to be. My member companies are now in single digits as far as the voice subscriptions they service in the state. I usually ask folks, how many people have a landline in their house? I won't ask today, because it's usually depressing when I ask people to raise their hands. But, you know, we're all moving to a different model. You know, we're all moving to a different model. The days of monopoly and state-sanctioned monopolies in the state are long gone. You know, we don't have that anymore, it's in the rearview mirror. We think our regulatory paradigm here should reflect that, allow us to compete more fairly. So we're working on that. That bill has already passed the Senate, it's before the House Consumer Affairs Committee for its consideration. We think it balances very nicely consumer protections with recognizing what's happening out there in a competitive environment. We're also looking at a number of other things. I know Todd mentioned pole attachments. These are things to kind of clear out some of the clutter, I would consider it. It's costly clutter. If you're getting a chunk of change to deploy, and a big chunk of that is to just get on the poles or get access to deploy, we don't think that's in the benefit of the consumer at the end of the day. We worked with the PUC several years ago as an association, as an industry, to get them to take adjudication of pole attachment issues from the FCC back to the PUC. So we didn't have federal cops on the job, we had the state and local cops on the job. We think that's important to work through that process. This body, both bodies, just passed 5G legislation to kind of streamline some of the local permitting process to get fixed wireless out there for everybody. I think that's important as we go forward. Another initiative we've been working on is House Bill 1658, prime sponsor by Doyle Hefley. It is a, we call it a road moves legislation. When PennDOT comes out, wants to improve a bridge or improve a road, we are often asked to move our infrastructure to help that. Great for the motoring public, and the federal money that's coming down for broadband is also coming down for some of these transportation projects. It's terrific, we're all in support of it. A lot of those expenses are not recoverable by my member companies. So it's great for the motoring public, not so good for their customers necessarily. So municipal and municipal water and sewer folks can enter into cost-sharing agreements with PennDOT to help mitigate some of the costs associated with the moving of that infrastructure. We like that same ability as telcos to be able to do that. That bill passed unanimously here and is before the Senate Transportation Committee. What have we done as a state? We passed Act 132 last year. It provides a nice framework, minimal investment in broadband, but it provides a framework for what we're trying to do here. $5 million, I think, the initial outlay, one competing, one local state or a bordering state, Ohio, has $270 million. So we got some work to do there, we are getting some federal money, understand that. Couple things about that, which I think apply to the federal money that's coming down as well, some things for you guys to keep in mind. We like when applicants have to have the technical, managerial, and financial expertise to pull off a project. We like, we're okay with having them put some skin in the game to get a project done and not just rely on other money to do it. We really like, and we mentioned overbuilding a little bit before, we really like to have a challenge process. If Company A comes in and says, I want to build this, and Company B says, we're already there, we think there should be a process there to be able to do that. So that's, I think, is important to take a look at as we go through, because overbuilding is not getting the biggest bang for the buck. Mention the federal initiatives, $65 billion nationally, $42 billion coming through the states for rural broadband deployment, some of it to go towards the affordability, getting broadband out for folks and helping them afford it. Again, those same principles apply for what we'd like to see coming down through the federal initiatives as well. Some of my member companies obviously participating in that, and so we look to that. What we're doing going forward is working with all folks, municipalities. Darren has a group together through Farm Bureau, the Manufacturers Association has a group together, working on all these things. We're party to all those. We think it's better to sit around a table and talk about where we are and where we want to go. I haven't seen a map yet that I love, quite frankly. It's better when you sit down and say, hey, we're here, as opposed to relying on any map. And we look forward to working with you folks going forward on all that stuff. So thanks for the opportunity, Chairman.
Thanks for your testimony. This hearing will end at 11 o'clock, we're not authorized to go beyond. Session begins at 11. I apologize for the short amount of time we have left, but Jim, if you're ready, if you have a condensed version, we would appreciate it.
I am, thank you. Good morning, everyone. And let me dispense with some of the formalities, just because of the interest of time. I find myself as the last speaker amongst three different panels, that there's not a lot of uniqueness that I can now bring to the conversation, because we've heard a lot of these things. But let me try a couple of things here. First, introduce myself. My name is Jim Marazzi, and I'm the President and CEO of DQE Communications, based in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We are a broadband fiber optic company that provides services to many businesses in and around Pennsylvania. DQE is a subsidiary company of Duquesne Light Holdings, also headquartered in Pennsylvania. And we've built over 4,000 fiber miles to serve our customers in the area. The types of customers we currently serve are large universities, healthcare systems, municipal governments, school districts, school IUs, and natures like that. And we've done that through making investments of well over $200 million in fiber infrastructure in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania since our inception to where we are today. I'm very, very encouraged with the passage of this most recent infrastructure bill that was passed by the House on Friday. There is a unique, once-in-a-generation opportunity for us to make a difference for residents of Pennsylvania by taking advantage of some of these funds that are available to us. And we need to be diligent, we need to be prudent, and we need to be smart about how to go about attacking this problem. You know, for many of you, I'm sure that you have heard from your constituents, I'm sure you've heard from county commissioners that are in your districts, that we have a problem out there with reliable, robust broadband communications, particularly in the underserved or the sort of the least densely populated areas of the Commonwealth. That's where we have our circumstances and our situations. It is not in the major metro areas of the Commonwealth or the suburbs around them, like the Pittsburghs, the Philadelphys, the Allentowns, places like that. We are talking about areas that are more rural, fewer homes per mile, farms and things of that nature. The significant problem, I do believe, we have here is with the overall connectivity of bringing discrete communities together and making them part of the overall network. That's very cost-prohibitive. You know, we refer to that as the middle mile. If I have discrete pockets or discrete little towns, you know, maybe there is an economic or business justification to go build that town, and now connecting this town to that one that's 15 miles away and bringing that traffic all the way back to Pittsburgh or to a Philadelphia gets to be very, very expensive. But the good news is, I do believe that there's a lot of pieces already in place to help solve some of these connectivity problems and some of these reliability problems here. Number one is the technology already exists, and it's readily available for us to take advantage of. We have a very good skilled workforce here in Pennsylvania that are building these networks, whether it is a fiber optic network, a wireless network, a more traditional telco network. We have good, solid workforce in place that can help solve these problems here. And then lastly, is that these broadband expansion projects can be done quickly. You know, we at DQE Communications have the workforce, we have the project management, we have the engineers necessary to build the solutions and then make that happen in reality. But, you know, one of the limiting factors, and I'm sure it doesn't get lost on anyone here, is that it's extremely expensive to build these fiber optic networks. It costs tens of thousands of dollars per mile to build network, particularly fiber, and that does not include any of the electronics or any of the switches, the routers, the optics, the transceivers necessary to make this happen. So this is truly a cost-intensive, capital-intensive kind of a business. You know, we have found creative ways in the past to try to solve these by unique routing of our networks, by trying to gang two, three, four projects together to try to take advantage the best way we possibly can. But we still have a challenge to solve here. We all think and agree that a robust, reliable, fast Internet is essential for Pennsylvania, for our competitiveness, for our children to get quality education in real time. We do need to establish the standards. We do need to become a benchmark kind of Commonwealth that has these systems necessary to make our Commonwealth strong and acceptable. to make our Commonwealth strong and acceptable. You know, my position is, is that what we have today is just not acceptable in a lot of this Commonwealth. We've heard the numbers before, the 25 megabits, 3 megabits per second, it's just not good enough for 2021 and beyond. We need scalable, we need to have standards that are much, much bigger than that. We strive for 1 gigabit per second service. We think that that is something that is broadband. We think that that is something that people and businesses do look for. But at a minimum, this 100 megabits per second should be our standard going forward. And importantly, because I want to make sure that people understand this point, the symmetrical aspect of the broadband is important as well. 100 megabits down, 100 megabits up. We talked about 25.3, we talked about 120. It's hard for a child to do online education and do that through a video call without having that symmetrical broadband. Same thing with business communications or Zoom meetings or things of that nature. So symmetrical, I think, is important as well. So as you, as a body, think these things through, I would encourage you to make that one of your key points, symmetrical broadband here. You know, I am not a believer in picking a technology and calling that the racehorse to go forward. I do believe we should establish standards, we should establish what makes sense for achieving goals, and we should strive for technologies and all sorts of technologies that could be helpful in that vein. And that allows the private sector to utilize its best judgment to move forward as well. But clarity of standards, clarity of what the objective is, I think is very, very important. We've heard from a lot of different people here today about different ways to attack this problem. I believe that no technology is future-proof, but I do believe by setting those standards and allowing the private sector sort of attack it that right way gives us the best bang for the buck and allows us to try to achieve our objectives here. You know, lastly, I'd just like to sort of say that with the passage of that $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill, what that really will mean for us is that this nation will have $42 billion to solve this problem. As I understand, the states will all be allocated $100 million to start, and then states will then get in line basically to say, we're in the best position to take advantage of these next projects. So I strongly encourage this body to be strong advocates for what Pennsylvania needs, what Pennsylvania wants, and how we go about doing it. We heard from other testifiers today about trying to truly identify where the problem areas are, getting to specific information, specific data points, specific maps, so we can identify where we need to solve these problems. I think that's really important to do that as well, so that we make sure that we are putting those dollars and those resources where it's most necessary. I look for this entity to define a framework for how Pennsylvania will compete favorably going forward. We need to win in this race, that's for sure, because that does help with our competitiveness as a state, helps with our education systems. Facilitating regional collaboration, we heard a little bit about that earlier today, I think is extremely important as well. Local people know where local problems are, and they know sort of best how to go about trying to solve those kinds of things. So I'd encourage us to do those things and continue to try to foster those ties with local communities. And lastly, your leadership and your advocacy on behalf of the counties you represent, I think is going to be an extremely important factor here. This is a big challenge. It's expensive to solve these kinds of challenges, it takes time to solve these kinds of challenges, but I do believe we've got the resources, I think we've got the intent, and I think we've got sort of at least the beginnings of a plan to move forward here. And I think with some combination of these various thought processes, these various technologies, we can make this happen. You know, for DQE Communications, I could tell you that we are committed to continuing to work on this problem. To date, we have served mainly business-oriented customers, but we recognize that there is this issue with these more rural areas. And with an appropriate economic model, with appropriate kind of funding, I think we could be part of that solution as well. And I offer my team's help and sort of offer to be whatever kind of a resource that this group would need to make decisions and stay informed. Again, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to sit here today and testify with you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have time for two quick questions. The first one from Representative Metzger.
Obviously, we're here today because there's a tremendous amount of money that's pouring into the space of broadband. But I have to tell you that my constituents in Somerset and Bedford County, they're mad. They're mad because for a number of years, they've watched dollar after dollar pour in to create rings and rings of dark fiber that provide no service to them at the end of the day. Obviously, there's a wireless portion of the solution, but that's not the solution at the end of the day. We have wire line groups sitting in front of us today. There's only a finite amount of bandwidth that we can push through the air, and we need to have the wire line side. So my question to you is, with all this money that's coming down the pike, how am I to make sure that it gets to that last mile? How am I to make sure that you actually provide that service, whoever you is, to my constituents on Ridge Road, Hooversville, Pennsylvania, that have not been able to get service for a number of years? And I guess is part of that solution making that there is some sort of carrot at the end of the day, meaning that a modified BFRR program where you have to chase the dollar? The dollar is allocated to the customer, and if you want that dollar, you have to build to that customer, not the other way around. And that's one of the solutions that I've put out there at this point. Curious about your thoughts on that. And as a follow-up, you've mentioned that health and safety were one of the things whenever we had a regulated environment for telephone lines. It was so important to health and safety that we regulated that area. I put to you that maybe broadband is the same. Maybe, rather than deregging, we need to start looking at the regulatory side and saying, if you guys are not going to provision broadband to the people who need it the most for health and safety reasons, we have to go the other direction. And if you want to play in the broadband game, you become regulated. I don't want to go that path, but is that the tough love that we need to provide if we're going to put all this money out there? Thank you.
So if you may, I'll answer that first. I'll start by saying I don't support the regulatory approach. You know, I do believe that you identify projects and you put plans together that address all of the constituencies in that area. What we've been doing so far, as you know, these dollars have been talked about, may becoming available, is we've been talking to county commissioners and showing that, hey, here's a plan to build this community. With this amount of money, we can build up and down every single street in this community. And whether a resident chooses to take service or not is a separate and independent issue. And think about it, if we build to, let's say, the doorsteps or right in front of the doors of 100% of the homes, and 30% of the homes choose to buy service, there's 70% of the network that I just built that never pays for itself, never gets a return. So I think there has to be this kind of mutual development and design of plans, and that's where I was trying to articulate that, that we need to come together to figure out where and what to build. But again, we can't ask a resident, whether that farm or that house over there, to take this service. And it still all costs those dollars to kind of build in this area.
Thank you for your response. Further responses could be emailed to Senator, not Senator yet, but Representative Metzger. Our final question from Senator John Kane.
Thank you. This is going to be, I guess, to Mr. Echius. How do cable companies actually decide on where to deploy, I guess, cable broadband? It's a two-part question. I'll ask you that part first.
Sure. Thank you, Senator. You know, it's a very simple exercise. It's a fantastic business. It's a monthly subscription business. And so there is incentive and motivation to serve every single household that is possible. It is purely an economic exercise to figure out where you can build that will provide a reasonable return over a period of years from that capital investment. And that is why I said earlier that having, and I think Steve echoed this, having experienced operators and managers of these networks that are willing to put some risk capital or some skin in the game in partnership with these programs and these funds is the pathway to success.
The other part of this is, will infrastructure only be extended to areas with a certain income level or where there are a large number of potential customers at the end of the road?
Absolutely not. There are no considerations for economic situation, income, or whatever the case may be. It is purely about the number of homes passed. And as I indicated before, the obstacles to getting there, whether it's the make-ready and the pole attachment and the pole replacement, or the permitting process, or the geography and topography of an underground build or whatever, they're pure cost and economic drivers that determine nothing about what that resident does, who they are, or what they make is a factor. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Senator Kane, a closing remark or comment?
If I didn't have opening remarks, I might as well say something in closing real brief. I do know that, let's remember that we have close to 600 or probably even more than 600,000 Pennsylvanians without broadband and are counting on us to deliver. Though, you know, these individuals that don't have it presently, you know, they're not able to do it from, at least in my district, I've been hearing it from a lot of the families that are in my rural area, you know, that they have problems with the schools, you know, not being able to do their work, because a lot of people were working from home because of the pandemic. I'm glad we're taking this important step today to have this hearing and to open my mind a little bit about what's out there. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to, you know, have a closing remark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Kristin Phillips Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I want to thank Chairman Marshall, Chairman Matsey, members of the House Consumer Affairs Committee for extending the invitation for the Senate Communications and Technology Committee to join the House for this very important hearing. Would like to thank all of our testifiers, and clearly, this is a top priority for the House and the Senate for Republicans and Democrats, and I appreciate the opportunity to work together to continue this conversation and find solutions to this great challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman Matsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank everybody, and I'll use my often-used phrase, there's a level of expectation, and there's a level of expectation from the consumer, from the business community, that when they turn their computer on, when they go to their phone, they have access. And I think that's paramount to any discussion, and I know that DQE and Jim, your comments about needs and wants really struck home, and I think that's very important. First $100 million goes to the states, and after that, who's best prepared and ready? Needs and wants need to be ready, and that's our job as policymakers to ensure that we have the adequate needs and wants, prepared, ready, in statute, and ready to go on day one. Appreciate it, everyone. Chairman Marshall, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank all those that came to testify, all those that provided us written testimony. We hope to put this information together quickly and get legislation out that will help to get this problem done and done right. Again, I want to thank Representative Pam Snyder, who I believe is still on virtually, for her leadership on broadband, and this hearing is hereby adjourned.